This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees to order. It's Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. We're meeting in the large meeting room at the lower level of the main library. This is partially electronic meeting and it's being held that way because a fully in-person meeting is impossible or impractical due to concerns for health and safety of board members, staff, and the public presented by the COVID-19 and to follow the governor's proclamation and the mayor's executive order directing social distancing and placing restrictions on gatherings. And with that, just a reminder to everyone that this meeting is being recorded. And I'll start with the roll call. First item on the agenda. Tom Engelmann? Yes. Sulya Roba? Okay, so it is not on. Craig Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe Heinrichs? Joe was not... Was uncertain for attendance. Judy Lance? Here. Thank you. Amanda Motto?
Here.
Thank you. Malavika Shokandi?
Here.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Maggie Motto indicated she would not be attending today. And myself, Steve Ewing. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so move, Steve. Malavika.
Okay, thank you. Judy, second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Call for the vote. Tom? Yes. Craig?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
And my own board is yes. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll carry on. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications. And the first item on that topic is the Friends of the Library. Laura, do you have a report?
Hi, everyone. Just a quick report today. How's the sound quality?
Good.
Okay. Not a lot of significant updates since last month. We're still quietly working through our bylaws revisions and hope to have that done shortly. We, as I mentioned last month, are in the public phase of the Capitol campaign and so have sent out letters to pass supporters and are starting to see some donations trickling in there. And we are still meeting, just like you all are, partially in person and partially remotely. So that's all that I can think of right now from my update from the Friends.
Okay. Thank you very much, Laura. Appreciate that. Next item is committee reports. Finance? Anything from finance, Tom? I just read, I looked through the budget report and it looks like we're running right on track for the budget. So everything looks steady. Thank you, Tom. Next item is personnel. Amanda or Craig, anything there?
Hi, yeah. I sent an email out. Everyone should have gotten it yesterday or Sunday, I believe, just with the evaluation for Amy that we have written out that will be sent to the city. That's going to be up for approval today, so I hope everyone had a chance to look at it. Also, I had on there kind of a summary of the goals that the board had raised for Amy in the various surveys that were returned. And I'm hoping that we can discuss those at the next meeting. That'll give us some time to think about the goals that are there and if there's any additional ones that we want to do. And Amy, that includes you, if there's any goals that you can think of that aren't on there or if any of them need clarification. I think that should give us some time.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda or under committee reports is... And who can say? Malavika, anything from your committee?
I just want to thank you all for participating in the wonderful cupcake, owl cupcake cake that we had for the DPL staff members. Thanks for the participation. It was late in celebrating Library Workers' Day, but we were able to do it. So thanks once again to you all for the wonderful participation.
Okay. Thank you, Malavika.
Malavika, thanks for organizing that.
Oh, you're very welcome, Craig. It was a pleasure.
Yes, I second that. Next item under reports and communications is the director report.
Sure, and I want to echo the thanks to you all for providing the cupcakes for the staff. They really enjoyed them. It was just kind of a nice thing in the midst of all the not-so-fun things that we're dealing with these days. Cupcakes were amazing. Sonic did a terrific job. And Brittany, our outreach supervisor, and myself, we both had the same idea that once the pandemic is kind of under control and there is a vaccine and all those things and we actually had a chance to really have a party to roll out the outreach vehicle, that it would be really fun to be able to have those at our party. So we've got that on our list of things that we want to do. Other than what's in the report that I sent, just kind of a quick, really super general update because we don't really want to talk about, you know, anything that would identify a particular staff. But so we, right now, we have five staff members out due to some variety of COVID-19 impacts. We just, I just saw on the news right before I came down that the Beth Norr Public Schools are requesting to go fully online starting Monday. So that will impact, I think, some of our staff in terms of childcare issues. Just as the Davenport School goes fully online, does not have an impact or has had an impact. So we're continuing to see some staffing impacts from all variety of COVID-19 challenges. And then just to let you know that, so yesterday was our first day with our change in our service model where we are only providing materials through the drive-up or curbside service and the only folks who are allowed in the building are those who have made appointments for public computers. And then today, we added that in. At the same time that the doors are open to allow public computer users and patrons who need to send taxes or use the scanner are also allowed in at that time to do what they need to do. And then the fax machine and scanner is really important. That access is really important to a lot of our patrons because they need to be able to fax documents and verifications of their identity and all those kinds of things to apply for a whole variety of different kinds of aid. So we're really seeing that that's really, has been really heavily used and we want to be able to try to continually provide that service to our patrons. But I think overall, that went really well, as well as can be expected. Not a lot of patient complaints. Mostly people understood why we were making those changes. And so we'll continue to do that. We'll reevaluate at the end of the month. And mostly, probably looking at the hospitalization rate. Really, the concern that was expressed was by the city to do whatever kind of mitigation efforts we can and change the behavior to hopefully make that situation feel better. I think that's everything I have unless anybody has any particular questions.
Any questions for Amy?
Amy, what does the governor's announcement mean at the library? Anything different?
It really doesn't because we already had, with the mayor's proclamation, there already is a mandate for residents to wear a mask in any city facility. But that is already in place and is more strict than the governor's new requirement. And we already were requiring staff to wear a face covering pretty much anytime unless they're eating lunch in the staff room or unless they actually have a private office where a door could be closed. So we already have in place efforts that are more strict than what the governor just put in place.
One thing we've noticed within Genesis is that there's been some transmission between staff in the lunchroom. They're not keeping social distanced in the lunchroom. They take off their masks, they eat, they socialize. Do you require social distancing in your lunch area?
We only have one chair at each table here at Main and those are six feet apart. And then, once you're done eating lunch, you're required to put your mask back on. Because that is an hour for lunch. And then we've also, at each of our locations, we have just kind of created a second lunchroom in each building. The lunchrooms, particularly at Eastern, it's pretty small. So if you put two people in, they probably can't be socially distanced. So we're using the large meeting room there. I think it's large meeting room, right? As the voting's over. And then we're using the meeting room at Eastern as well as a second place for people to have lunch. It's a little larger and we can get people spread out more.
Okay. I'd just like to comment that I think it speaks very well for you and the other management people at the library to, not only to make available those important services to our patrons and citizens, but also the fact that, you know, that you're aware of that, you know, that need and, you know, can provide that. So that's it. We're going to make adjustments where we can. Right now, I'd just like to take a little bit of a break here and circle back around. I forgot to introduce those folks that are on, that are members of the library, management staff, and others. So first of all, I want to... Lauren Guinness, president of the Friends of the Library Board, gave her a report earlier. So she's obviously here. We also have attended the meeting from Library Administration Jennifer Williams, the operations manager, Lexie Riley, the assistant director, and Tracy Moore, the development director. And the other person that joined the meeting here is Marion McGinnis. And that provides a good segue because the next report is for the council liaison. Marion, do you have anything for us today? Marion? Okay, we'll check back on Marion a bit later. Okay, moving on to our agenda to new business. The first item under new business is the motion to accept the bid from Paragon Commercial Interiors in the amount of $143,480.38 for the main library furnishings. This item was tabled at the last meeting because we did not have a recommendation yet from our architects' legate. And we have that now and so we are ready to accept or to make, to approve this bid. We have a motion to accept the bid from Paragon Commercial Interiors. So move. Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judy. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'd just like to point out that this bid from Paragon was not the low bid, but the legate architects, in their analysis of the bids, recognized that we... The actual low bid did not meet the quality or usage specification. And so that bid was not accepted. Okay, have a motion and second to accept the bid from Paragon Commercial Interiors in the amount of $143,480.38 for main library furnishings. Call for the vote. Craig?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Tom? Yes. And my own board is yes. The motion carries. Okay. I'm going to circle back again and try one more time. Marion, do you have anything for, from the council board?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I got bumped off just as we got to me. Yeah, just a couple of things. Not a whole lot. I mean, it's, you know, it's budget time at the city, as you guys are well aware of. The, just to let you know in terms of the whole COVID situation, and I was, I hope I don't bounce you off again. But one of the things the city has implemented in the last week is for any, in any use of city facilities, it should not be city buildings where employees are necessarily, but like the Adler or the River Center, there are city streets. There is, they have to have an approved plan from the Health Department of how they're going to maintain whatever. Now, with the governor's guidelines last night, that could, you know, basically eliminate most everything for a while. But that was put into place. And there have been a lot of inquiries about the impact of COVID on the city staff. And we can't obviously share, you know, because of HIPAA regulations. But we were able to share with the media, and you may see this, and I wanted to share it with you if you don't, that this is, this is public record information, so it's shareable. We couldn't ask as, we can't say this is how many people. But there were, basically, there were 25 city employees, 745 hours for a, in a two-week period that used COV FFA pay code, which is, can be used if an employee is sick with COVID or caring for an individual who's sick with COVID or quarantining under a physician's order or because of exposure. And then, in that same two-week period, there were 52 employees, which was 1,091 hours, who used the pay code that can be used when an employee needs time off to care for a child due to loss of childcare. So, related to COVID. So anybody that's having to deal with a child because the schools are closed, for instance. So in any case, there is a, you know, there is, as you can see, in that week at least, there was a greater impact on, you know, dealing with children and the whole school schedule. So it is impacting employees. I guess the only thing I would say to those of you, not necessarily just because you're on the library board, but living in Davenport, they are, you know, the city is working to, and I'm sure the library is too, to schedule people flexibly, especially when they're dealing with childcare situations and the other situations, of course. But so there will not be people in offices the way we are used to having them. If you're a resident of Davenport, there's not necessarily the same number of people in the office. It may take more time to get things done. Now, not through the police department or anything like that or an emergency situation, but just in terms of regular city business. So what I would ask is, you know, be patient because certainly the city, like every other employer, is being impacted by this. So, and I just wanted to share the information that I could share, which again is completely public record. So really, nothing else. I, except I am, I have been appointed to my task force, to a council task force to look at the income that will be coming for the sale of the heritage apartment, public housing, and to make recommendations of how that money will be used. There are no, it is not restricted funding. And so it is, you know, going to be a significant amount. So my charge, along with Alderman Dunn and Dickman, is to come up with recommendations, which of course the council will approve. But so I'm working on that process as well. So, you know, and that's ongoing and I'm sure will take a while because we want to be very, you know, thoughtful and everything else in terms of our recommendations. So that's, that's really kind of all right now from City Council. I suspect that next week, our, but maybe not, our council meeting might be on Tuesday. It has been on Thanksgiving week in the past, so I wouldn't be surprised if that happens. I'm not sure of the council's schedule for December. I think there is a fifth week in December, so it may just be that we have two full, two-week cycles and then we have that last week as a week off because it's the fifth week. But I don't have any of that information yet. So that's really all I have today. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Marion. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda under new business is a motion to approve the 2021 strategic plan implementation plan. This was discussed at our last meeting. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
I move, Steve.
Thank you, Malavika.
Malavika.
Is there a second?
Second, from Craig.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2021 strategic plan implementation plan. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing done, I'll call for the vote. Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Tom? Yes. Craig?
Yes.
And my own board is yes. The motion carries. Next item under new business is a motion to approve the following changes to library services due to COVID-19 pandemic. Library materials will be available only via curbside or drive-up service. Only patrons using public computers or who have appointments in special collections will be allowed in the buildings. May I have a motion in that regard?
Judy, I move.
I move.
I have a motion from Judy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the changes to the library services due to COVID-19. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to add that what I shared previously is that in addition to the public computers, that we'll let patrons in to use the fax machine or copier or the scanner as well.
Okay, so we need to amend the motion to include the use of the fax machine and the scanner as Amy pointed out in her director's report. So, which all of this, I guess, has taken place since our last meeting. So anyway, could someone make an amendment in that regard to add those two items to the motion? I guess, let me go back. Who made the motion? Tom?
Judy and Tom.
Okay. Okay, Judy, you made the motion. Are you okay with that amendment, Judy?
Yes.
Okay. Tom, are you okay with a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the amended motion now reads, "Motion to approve the following changes to library services due to COVID-19 pandemic. Library materials will be available only via curbside or drive-up service. Only patrons using the public computers, the fax machine or scanner, or who have appointments in special collections will be allowed in the buildings." Is there any discussion? Okay. If not, a call for the vote on the amended motion. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Malavika?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom? Yes. Thank you. Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. And my own board is yes. The motion carries. Next item under new business is discussion of the library volunteer policy. Amy, would you like to frame that up, please?
Sure. So this is just really general, very, very general policy about our volunteers. There's a whole lot of procedure that goes behind this in terms of how volunteers apply and are assigned to jobs and things like that. I had Jennifer take a look at this. She really acts as our volunteer coordinator and deals with all the volunteer onboarding. And she didn't have any recommended changes in the language that we're proposing that this policy be adopted or, again, without any changes.
Okay. Is there any discussion regarding the volunteer policy?
Steve, I just have, I just have questions, just for my knowledge, that's it. And Amy, my quick question was, like, do we have any kind of a minimum time commitment in terms of the hours that the volunteer has to be working or rather volunteering with us?
No, we don't have any stated minimum.
Okay.
Because it could really depend on what that volunteer is doing.
Oh, okay.
So there might be situations where a one-time thing works for us. Usually, it's an ongoing type of arrangement so that once the person gets some training, they might come once a week to do that particular task or once a month or whatever. So usually, it's some kind of an ongoing thing, but we don't have any established minimums.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Amy.
Any other questions or comments regarding the volunteer policy? Okay, hearing and seeing done. We'll carry this over to the next agenda for approval. Thank you. Okay. I have another item that I skipped over on the agenda. And certainly, very important. That's our motion to approve the director's annual evaluation. So, may I have a motion to approve the director's annual evaluation?
I move.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom.
I will. Sorry.
Have a motion and a second to approve the director's annual evaluation. Is there any discussion? Okay, just like to comment that, forgetting about all of the COVID and everything else, Amy's done a wonderful job leading the library for us. And then to add on all the complications of the, that the COVID pandemic has brought before us, that makes it worse than even then. So thank you very much. Okay, call for the vote on the motion to approve the director's annual evaluation. Malavika?
Yes, Steve.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom? Yes. Thank you. Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. And my own board is yes. The motion carries. We have no items under old business. And so the next item on the agenda is to adjourn. We have no items under old business, and so the next item on the agenda is to adjourn. They have a motion to adjourn. Move the adjourn. Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Yes, Steve. Malavika.
Thank you, Malavika. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. I'll call for the vote. Tom, yes. Craig?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Really appreciate your work to help lead the library and forward to seeing you at the next meeting if not before.
Hello.
Yeah, it was a good Thanksgiving, everyone.
Can't believe it. Can you open it? Is it the same?
Guys, thank you.
Bye-bye. Happy Thanksgiving.